It's a call the February eighth, twenty twenty four meeting to order. We'll pause for a moment of silent reflection. Aaron, you want to lead us in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance.
Willie, you want to lead us in a roll call, determination forum?
I will be glad to. Ryan Williams here. Jerry Burmeister.
Here.
Corey Hall.
Here.
Old man Steve Denny.
Here.
Francis Gags.
Here.
All right.
With five out of five, we have determined that you do have a torn. Approval of minutes from the prior meeting, these are on the Google Drive. Anybody have any questions, comments, concerns, additions, changes to those? Okay, hearing none, I will entertain a motion for approval of the minutes from the January eleventh, twenty twenty four meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of the minutes from the January eleventh, twenty twenty four meeting, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. For treasures report, we don't have any documents currently because we are still closing out. Uh, year twenty twenty three and we is preparing those and we don't have them back yet, so. Willie, unless you have anything to add, we will kind of skip the court treasures report.
That's fine, skip it.
Okay, great, moving on to department reports. For the month of February, or actually the month of January, we'll start with Chief Mark Potter.
Good evening. Towns, the police department report for January. Safety Systems has eight of the new cars completed. Uh, so we're hoping to get the final four done here soon and and out on the road. Uh, so far, we've gotten good feedback from the people in the town, like the stickers and the look and all that. We had the annual training meeting with my training officers. Um, per the academy, we have to do twenty-four hours extra every year. And uh, then we look at our needs and wants and how that adjusts with policy change or law enforcement trends and we'll probably have fourteen additional on top of the twenty-four. And then throughout the year, if there's a specialty item for someone that they're interested in, we send people to those too, so. We definitely always get our minimum mandate, but we always go above that as well. Um, abandoned vehicles. This has become an issue, we got a complaint the other day, we've been looking into it, we also have a. Couple other people in town that decide they like to collect cars. And uh, so we're working on that and one thing the guys do is when they're out patrolling, they notice some. Per the ordinance, uh, it's a twenty day notification when they find these vehicles and uh, we're on Zoom, right? Good, so uh, definitely get this out to people because. A lot of people think if I just plated it, it makes it legal and that is not the case. The uh, visible from the public roadway and inoperable are the main things. Uh, and we have one that uh, I think is going to become an issue because the owner believes that he has it for sale. Even though the sign is hidden behind his Mini Cooper and he can't see it from the roadway. And he's priced the vehicle at a price that's way over anybody would ever buy it for. So here in a couple of days, when that's on a tow truck, you may get a complaint. But uh, in reviewing the ordinance, I got with Jeff to ask him if. A car for sale meets any type of against the ordinance, I haven't got feedback yet from him. But in reading the ordinance, it doesn't say anything about car for sale and it's been for sale for years, so. Uh, we'll be, we'll be at, uh, he wants ten grand for a twenty-five hundred dollar vehicle, so. Yeah, cause he actually answered me when I asked it, so.
Tell him get a dealer's license.
Yeah, and move and move out of the the town. Um, so with that said, we're going to be moving towards the abandoned vehicles, the closer we get to warmer weather.
Chief, did you say the ordinance says, wait, how many days?
Twenty.
Twenty days?
From the time you notice notify someone, hey, your vehicle's. Subject to be towed because of it falls under the rule, you have twenty days to remedy it.
Okay, I thought the state statute said seventy-two to seventy-two hours.
Well, that's on a uh, public roadway. Yeah, this is private property.
I thought it was the same on private too.
Yeah, and it could be, but our ordinance is just written.
Well, it would be a car on the same other property. Right, which is different than like the seventy-two, but somebody else's car on somebody else's property. There's one of the problem vehicles. Way back there under that.
One thousand one hundred and seventy dispatched incidents for the month, twenty uh, crash reports. Adult criminal arrests were thirty-seven. Uh, just this week, I was gonna bring up two stories that are kind of hot topics, I guess, and one made the chatter. Uh, through the school press release. We had a parent who had protective orders against the child that was in the car with him. Uh, he got stopped for simple speed violation, this is where when people go. Ah, just speed, you know, why are the cops even out here doing this? Because it always somehow rolls snowballs into something worse. Uh, this particular incident, there was a protective order protecting the child from the father. Father was arrested and he decided to put his illegal drugs in his daughter's bookbag and send her into the school. So we are actually going to charge him with a criminal reckless count for every juvenile that was in that classroom when those drugs went in. Uh, prosecutor said they liked it, so we'll see how that flies, thirty-some counts. So do not put your drugs in your kid's backpack and send them into school. And then later that day, we had a subject out on the interstate, decided he wanted to kill himself. And the guys ended up tasing him and getting him medical attention, so. That all happened. Once a Thursday, Tuesday. Yeah, and uh, yeah, so it's been kind of busy.
Chief, on the adult arrest.
Yes.
Summary, it says thirty-seven, is that thirty-seven people or this?
On that, that's thirty-seven counts, so it could be ten people.
That's right.
Three arrests each or whatever the amount, yes. Yeah, but like next month, you'll see thirty-some for that guy and then. Be a little larger. And that is it.
Great. Anything else, Sir Chief?
Mark, on those abandoned cars or what if they're hiding them in their backyard and they're not visible over the street?
Visible from a public roadway, that's that's the way it reads. But, uh, we've had people, they think, oh, if I put a tarp on it, that makes it legal and that doesn't. And then people say, well, it's plated, that doesn't. And it has to be operable, so in twenty days, if we show up and it does start. Then we'll go home, but uh. That's how it works.
Thank you.
The the backyard thing may be more of a code ordinance through Mr. Mayberry. Yeah, if you can, yeah. If they're not weed eating around them and causing rodents or whatever.
Thanks. Aaron?
Good evening. Um, just one quick note, we did hire a new full-time administrative assistant. Uh, Sherry Belt, she comes from Springville State Park. Brings a wealth of knowledge, um, she's going to be really good for our team, so I would encourage all of you to stop by the office, say hi. So she can put a face with a name. Um, other than that, I don't have much to add, any questions on my report?
I'd just like to say the simulator at the golf course is fabulous.
It it turned out much better than we had ever hoped. We went in there and we're like, oh, let's put a wall here, let's put a wall here and it all came together really, really nicely, so.
You guys did a great job.
Staying busy.
It is, it is staying busy, um, not so much in the evening like we had thought, but we haven't really started promoting it, um. Full, full force, so I think once we do that, we'll, we'll see a nice turnout.
Is it helping beer sales?
It will.
All right.
Yeah, we won't have that uh, form on the wall where you don't break checks to us every week, I don't think.
Miss that.
So.
So is that both like VR or?
So. It's you actually hit an actual golf ball into a screen and there's a launch monitor that sits behind it and it projects. It reads all the raw data and then translates it.
Cool.
Into what the actual shot would look like if you were outside. So it's pretty cool. Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hannah Rose or Bensky or planning director, we have your report and or drive, anything you'd like to?
Um, no, I don't really have anything, January's very slow, uh, we only had three new home permits pulled. Um, one thing I did want to highlight is HPC, uh, we're trying out something new, we're, we're gonna host an open house. During their usual meeting, um, at PAS on the thirteenth. Just kind of what HPC does, how we can uh. Outreach to mainly more people, the value of being in a historic district and kind of cover what that is and why it's important. Um, so that's really all I have, anyone's welcome to come, if you'd like, that'll be six thirty to eight thirty. Other than that, nothing really in January.
Any questions for Hannah? All right, thanks, Scott, town manager report?
We have a slide, yes, okay. Go ahead and scroll down. Um, we'll talk about this in a little bit later on, uh, that's the bids. So not a lot today, uh, to talk about, a lot of turning gears going on, but not, not a lot of noise. So, but the one thing I want to point out, even though now it's fifty, sixty degrees out. The guys, um, during those very low temperatures, um, we had four. Through three linemen and and dusty for the water department where I. Was, uh, let's see who was on call, it was TJ and Dusty were on call and then he, we basically. Lost power out at the um, trailer park of the reformatory. And it took all, took three linemen to get that up. TJ was out there for eight to twelve hours, he had a little bit of frostnip, I think Kyle got some. All of them got a little bit of frostnip, I mean, it was that bad out there. Um, so just hats off, Dusty was constantly out there salting. I don't think he ever got two or three hours straight asleep, um, constantly being called out, so they, they just did a wonderful job. I mean, the persistence to stick with it. Um, out there at the trailer park, they hooked up a, a transformer. And with all those electric heaters going on out there, it blew that transformer, so they had to rehang another transformer. And you can imagine how frustrating that was to do that in that severe weather and then. Um, to have to do that all over again and stay out there for that long, so. Um, any questions to me about anything, I do have two other things that are not on the slides, but. Um, we have had a tentative agreement, um, with the Kilkarni family for the developing North Heritage Way. That'll, that split will be seventy-five, twenty-five, I know we've talked about it in some other meetings, they initially wa- wanted to uh, split the. Fifth ninety-ten, that was way out of whack, um, and we stuck terror guns and ended up seventy-five, twenty-five. And then we got a clearance on the asbestos for the, there's no asbestos in the Mill Street. House, so that's going to be coming down uh, shortly. The SWAT team decided they want to use it a couple more times, in fact, they're out there today and I believe the fire department's going to use it. Um, once or twice, and then so I, I, I said the cutoff is, um, in, in March, we're going to take it down. Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, um, citing no old business, we'll move to new business. Um, the first item, new business appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission. We have one appointment that was not made last month because the candidate wanted uh, a day to think about it. And so she thought about it and so, um, if this is a town council president appointment. And so I make, I guess, the motion and the recommendation to appoint Kate Edwards to that vacant spot on historic preservation.
Yeah, exactly, and it makes the appointment, then it's running by the final.
Great. So do we need a motion for that then?
You, you nominated.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. So we have a nomination for Kate Edwards that I need a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion and a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of Kate Edwards to join the Historic Preservation Commission, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, Kate will join. And I know that she has that open house on the thirteenth already on her calendar and she's ready to go.
Kate will do a great job.
Yeah, she's been through the great process before, so she'll be a great resource for folks that come before, um, Historic Preservation Commission. Um, next up, ordinance twenty-four oh-two, amending the ordinance governing trees and shrubs. Don't be thrown off by what this is, the title of this, um, is basically the ordinance that created the Urban Forestry Committee.
That is correct, yes.
Denise is our staff liaison, so she's going to talk about this amendment.
Yes, yeah, thank you for making that clarification, um, yes, it is an ordinance established to the Urban Forestry Committee. And I am here on behalf of the Urban Forestry Committee, uh, we have an ordinance that we would like to propose for your consideration. Although the amendment is very minor, we feel it's very important to the efficiency and effectiveness of our program, which we feel is uh. Growing here drastically here in the last couple of years. If you remember back in about twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, there was a time in that committee was struggling to meet quorum. So we came to the town council at that time and we had asked if we could have an amendment, taking a seven-member body. Uh, committee membership down to a five membership, so that made it so much easier for us to meet quorum. To gain consistency with that program, to make it really strong and and active, and we've got five great members that serve on that board. Um, just in recent discussions and conversations, uh, interest in other programs and projects that we'd like to do here coming up in the future. We would like to uh, add uh, to our membership, but in a little bit different way. Um, so we are asking if we could have up to two ex officio members, um, to this board. And those members would be non-voting members and they would serve as advisory role to myself as a staff and then also to the board. They would not have to come to all the meetings, um, they could even be kind of on an on-call basis. But uh, ex officio is just a Latin term for from the office, uh, it's an appointment because of someone's status. Or a position that they hold uh, elsewhere, so what we were thinking about is. Someone, for example, a liaison to the parks, someone that already that we work with, it could be the street department, it could be the park department. Someone that is in a role to already assist us with urban forestry management, um, but then it also could, could be an expert in the field. Someone that we can call on, ask and seek advice, kind of help out with some programming things that we would like to uh, start giving to our community. Um, so that's just some examples of ways that we feel that these roles could uh, help benefit our program and our committee. The committee is asking for uh, up to, so it's kind of a may, it's not a shall, so then that way, if those. Uh, positions have vacancy, we still remain in compliance, so do not have to have them filled at all times. If the committee doesn't fill that we've got a lot going on, that we need to have it filled, um, we would have that option. But we would still like to be able to have up to the two members. And then also, those two members would be appointed by the town council president, same as the five existing vote, voting members. As approved by town council, and we like to keep it consistent with a three-year term as well. And um, also in the section ninety-six, twenty-two later on in there, they will not receive compensation for this role. Same as our voting members. So we just really believe that this would be a great benefit to our committee and we appreciate your consideration, if you have any questions, don't hesitate. Yeah, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Denise? They discussed this at your urban forestry meeting, so they are aware that this is coming to us. As the governing body of that, so, um, if there aren't any questions, I will entertain a motion for approval.
Make that motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Suck it.
I have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance twenty-four oh-two, amending the ordinance governing trees and shrubs, also known as the urban forestry. Yeah, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, now this is just the first read, um. Denise, given that we're getting ready to go into, I assume planting season, would you want us to suspend, would you prefer if we suspended the rules and?
We have discussed if we could, if it, if you do choose so to do that and uh, approve it the final, because we are not a voting. Body that we can do a first read, kind of like the planning commission serves, so we do need to have the two votes.
Okay.
Going into the spring, uh, we would uh, foresee uh, interest in being able to, we'd like to discuss it at our meeting next week. Um, on who we think that would be fitting for those positions to then get back with the town council president. Uh, Skaggs and then maybe appointment in March or April, so yes, that would be great.
Kate, do we have a motion for suspension of the rules to approve on the same night as introduced? I have a motion, do I have a second for suspension of the rules?
Suck it.
I have a motion and a second for suspending the rules, now this has to be unanimous, right, in order for it to work, so. Do we need a roll call vote then, or are we good just to do voice vote, okay. All in favor signify by saying aye to suspend the rules, aye, opposed. Okay, the rules have been suspended, I will now entertain a motion for second read of ordinance twenty-four oh-two, amending the ordinance governing trees and shrubs.
So.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Suck it.
I have a motion and a second for second read of ordinance twenty-four oh-two, amending the ordinance governing trees and shrubs, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimously, and it's good to go for next week.
Thank you.
Great. Um, resolution twenty-four oh-three, amending the I sixty-nine interchange master plan.
Yeah.
This is Hannah Rose's project, so let her talk about it.
So, um, planning commission has been looking at, uh, if you actually want to scroll to the last page, it looks like this. Um, it's just a visual. So this is the southwest quadrant of the I sixty-nine plan, um, you, um, by the Bainwalke property, listed waters, things like that. Um, so if you notice, there's a brown blob and a yellow blob and this red blob on top. Um, so that yellow area was originally written into the plan, um, to only really allow. One kind of residential style. And that being large lot executive style homes. Now, planning commission has had a lot of discussion about the reality of those types of homes exclusively in this area. Uh, especially because it is a very large project along sixty-nine. Um, and after talking, we did have a joint meeting with REC. That quadrant was supposed to reflect also a, a flexible style of home, so town homes, condos, multi-family, single-family. You know, um, higher end could be executive, um, that was denser along the highway and got less dense as you move towards six hundred. So this language in red is what they had agreed upon adding uh, at the planning commission meeting, which we had a joint meeting with RDC. And in the next meeting, we had a, uh, planning, what was last night, um, with planning commission to. Give a favorable recommendation on adding this language, so it really just kind of opens it up, so if they have someone approach them. About rezoning it, they have the justification in the plan language to allow like. Uh, something with town homes or multi-family or even smaller, single-family, not just large lot, million dollar homes. Which is what from RDC's reaction, uh, built this plan was supposed to be in there the whole time. And maybe just got lost in translation, um, but they were under the assumption that that language was already. So that's kind of the first part. And then this new language, this second paragraph talks about the red area. Where planning commission, um, and planning staff looked at that where. You could definitely put denser style housing along there if you had a developer interested in it, we're not trying to take away from that. But typically uses along a highway are things like offices, they tend to be a little heavier, they're not usually geared towards residential. Um, so they wanted to add the ability, again, if someone comes in for a rezone. And they have some offices or they have, you know, a s- very small, um, not semi-traffic, not smokestack style. Manufacturing, something like that, again, they would have justification to allow it. Cause as it sits right now, the only thing that would be able to come in would be like an S F one zoning. And that's just not anything a developer is going to be interested in in that particular area, so. This language is uh, what they approved to be added uh, as the, the red area, so this are things like. Hotels, possibly medical, uh, uses, retirement style living, offices, very light retail. Um, and really, you know, you could even pepper that in the residential areas, uh, if you're familiar with Saxton Village or Westlake. Some of those kind of have like a restaurant in their village or the dentist office or things like that. Looks like a home where it's built into, into some town homes, a multi-family. Um, so that's always a possibility that folks could do too, but we were just missing language and clarification in this quadrant.
Miss did receive a favorable recommendation from planning commission last night, so we are just doing the second read on that. Any questions for Hannah?
It was passed as favorable.
Yes.
Okay, they forgot to circle.
Oh, well, that's because Kyle did it, maybe Carol, Carol's usually signed.
Right.
Yeah. But I was there, I can vouch that it did receive a fair. I know. So, um, any questions for Hannah Rose? Okay, if no questions, comments or concerns, I'll entertain a motion for approval. I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second for approval of resolution twenty-four oh-three, amending the Pendleton I sixty-nine interchange master plan, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next up, we have two bid recommendations, we'll start with the one for the Elm Street Drain Reconstruction Project.
Yeah, um, so we have, uh, town of Pendleton has two construction projects that we have underway. Uh, we started the planning process about a year ago, it's our engineering, uh, banning engineering. And the first one is the Elm Street Drain Reconstruction Project. Uh, we went through bid process in the fall and then we had opening bids on February the first. And for both of those projects, um, they're projected for construction to start here this spring and last until about late summer to early fall. Um, but at the bid openings, um, actually each of the projects, uh, received four bids, uh, each. And uh, from there, apparent bid war, uh, winner was determined. And then the bid packets were analyzed by our engineer in full detail, uh, they analyzed from all the scopes of the project. The specs and so forth to make sure that all those uh, requirements uh, and expectations were met. In your Google Drive, you'll find the bid recommendation letter from the professional engineer, award letter, the bid analysis. And then also a copy of the winner's bid packet. So for the first project, the Elm Street Drain Reconstruction Project, the award winner, uh, the contractor for that is United Construction Service. The project cost estimate for that before going into the bids was about five hundred and thirty-eight thousand. The lowest bid, which did meet all the specs, came in from UCS at four hundred and fifty-seven thousand. So it did come in, uh, a little bit, uh, you know, good amount less, so overall, it will save the town about eighty-one thousand. Um, that project will be funded by stormwater fees, uh, so that will be a hundred percent savings to the town. Anyone have any questions on that first project, um, the Elm Street Reconstruction Project is basically. Um, constructing a, uh, regu- or a drain that's going to go from, and it's between Pendleton Avenue and Main Street. Um, there's a railroad bed there, um, that has an old clay tile drain, it's collapsed, it's no longer efficient, no longer working. Um, there's a lot of flooding in that area, so this project is going to be huge and eliminating a lot of flooding in a lot of private properties back uh, in that area. Um, it's going to run from Elm Street all the way on, along the railroad, all the way railroad bed, all the way down to Main Street. It will sit about eleven feet underground, it's going to be a thirty-six foot, or thirty-six inches of pipe, sorry. Um, it'll be perforated, uh, we're going to have lateral, uh, yard drains off to the east for properties, um, to the east. That will help eliminate any flooding, um, excess water that sits there in high level rain. And then it will then draw it into that larger drain and then it will, uh, lead out then across Main Street to the outfall there. At Fall Creek behind Arabian Point. So that's kind of the gist of that project and uh, if you have any questions about that, Miss Scott, he's.
Yeah, I just want to, just to make sure, um, you understand, so. We were also, we have split out the project, originally, we were also going to reconstruct Elm Street with this. Um, but we made the decision for several reasons. One of cash flow, we're going to separate out the two projects. And the Elm Street, street itself reconstruction will, that will come later. Uh, but now it's two separate projects, so originally we were talking about Elm Street, which included the street and the brand new house. And then, uh, I, I think we ought to emphasize that those, the backyards of both, on the Pendleton side will, uh, they. All of them are assigned units now.
Uh, we're waiting for one.
One more to allow us to go onto their property, just not right deep. Uh, to install a yard drain, which you know, we started doing, we did on. The Watch Street project and also the Franklin Street and, um. So that will help with their drainage, is that that railroad bed was working almost like a dam, but the water was running off and then collecting there and sitting for days.
The water was running off and then collecting then sitting for days and days. So they're, they're, they signed them pretty quick, so they're, you tell her after you did this.
Yeah. And those yard drains are gonna have laterals connected to it, so then that way, if they have any sub pumps or any drainage issues farther uh into their property. They can trench it out, put in piping and connect into that lateral, which will be connected to that yard drain, which is connected to the larger pipe, so, yeah. Mm-hmm.
Great.
And we did uh apply for community crossings for the Elm Street Project, it's twenty twenty-four. Um, application that was at the end of January, so we'll hopefully hear from that in March or April, so, yeah.
Are the railroad beds gonna come out?
No, um you'll see them, it's, like, we call it the laundry property, good years ago, it used to be a laundry mat, it's that last property. On the east side of Main Street before you hit Madison.
Right.
That faces Main Street, there's a couple more yards beyond, backyards beyond that, that they get those homes faced, built up and out. We're gonna, uh, he's got a drain in that yard, in his driveway, it's a gravel driveway. We are gonna connect, have to cut through his yard and the railroad bed. To hook that up, and then we will rebuild a retaining wall that he's got there, and then we'll have to, we'll add another retaining wall. So that's about all that we're gonna do as far as getting into the railroad bed, other than the, the trenching to put it. Good, there is, there is uh sanitary sewer that runs down it already. So it's not the first time that railroad bed's been dug up since it was turned over to the property.
Great. Any questions for Scott or Denise, I'll do this. Do we even make a motion for approval, or how do we do that?
For to accept the bid?
Yeah, yes.
We're just giving Scott permission to.
Yeah, yes. So we have a motion to give Scott permission to proceed with this?
So, so.
We have a motion, we have a second? I have a motion and a second for the recommendation for the bid award on the Elm Street Drain Reconstruction Project, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion. Scott, you have permission. Okay, next up, we have the.
Evan?
Yes.
Do we need something in writing for, or gave him approval, or the minutes cover that?
The minute should cover.
Okay.
Great.
Okay, next up, we have various roadway resurfacing and repairs.
Yes, can I? Yes, so this one was a part of our community crossings application in twenty twenty-three dash two, so we applied for this in July. We've uh received award uh sometime in November, went through the bid process. Um, and then also, like I said earlier, on the first of February, we had bid opening. And so for this one, the lowest uh bidder was Midwest Paving. Uh, they also met all the specs uh and standards uh that were outlined in the bid packet. For this project, it consists of five mill and overlay uh roadway uh improvements, and then six chip and seal. And then we also are gonna fog seal those chip and seal uh roadways. So what was projected going into this project was nine hundred and seventeen thousand overall costs for all uh those eleven roadway improvements. The bids came in significantly less, and I think one of the reasons why is because asphalt costs have settled. Um, we put in, our engineers put in a high contingency in on their estimate, uh estimate, so. Um, but it did come in at just right under six hundred thousand dollars, so it was over a three hundred thou- thousand dollars less. Uh, than what was projected, um but all of the bids, maybe except for one of them, were significantly lower. Uh, than what was projected going into it, so overall savings is three hundred and nineteen thousand plus. And then for the town, because this project is funded by the NDOT Community Crossings Funding, which actually we rewarded six hundred and forty-four thousand. Which is a seventy-five, twenty-five split, um you know, match requirement. So the award, you know, will have to come back down, we'll only be able to have seventy-five percent covered. Of the five hundred and ninety-seven, uh but still, that leaves us, when you account eligible items and ineligible items. It's about a seventy thousand savings to the town alone, so.
Great. Any questions for Denise, for Scott? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion for approval of this to give Scott permission to enter into these contracts.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second for approval?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval, uh we're giving Scott permission to enter into these bids, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Great, that's all the new business we have tonight.
Denise does a good job. It seems like it's simple, but there's a lot of things, especially once the work is in progress.
And applying for community crossings grants is no small feat, and I, I personally have seen Denise here the night before, it's due at ten-thirty at night. Signing things or making sure it's all done perfectly, so we appreciate you Denise.
Great job.
It's been great, and thank you to NDOT for the Community Crossings Program, cause it's how we are able to maintain a lot of our rights. Um, any public comment? Anybody online in public comment? Okay, anything for anybody up here before I adjourn? Okay, we'll adjourn at six thirty-six.